Call this meeting to order at 6:03.
I guess we'll work.
First, like, if you approve the minutes from May 8th, please.
So, well.
You weren't here. Can you move them if you weren't here?
Yeah.
I was here.
You were here. I have to send them this meeting in.
I was here.
I have you and Damian not here.
I wasn't here for a joint meeting.
Get the film.
I just missed a joint meeting.
Can you amend the minutes if you're not here in the minutes?
Can I amend the minutes?
That you're here and you're not here?
Can someone else just make the motion? Thank you, Judy Pierce.
Who seconded it?
Seconded.
Thank you.
She wasn't here either.
All in favor?
No, 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 no. I was here.
Prove it. Did you make any motions?
No.
And no one believes for a minute that you could say that.
Yeah.
Alright, we'll crack the mix. Okay, these are the meetings of May 8th.
Yes.
It does not say you were here, Cindy.
She wasn't here the meeting before.
On May 8th, Thursday, May 8th, it says Damian and Cindy were absent.
I know I was.
You were here. You weren't here.
I know that I was.
I'm gonna go back. I'll be, I'll be with you in a sec.
Did you send Cindy with you out?
Well, we have, we have a motion in a second.
Got it. All in favor for the minutes from May, raise your hand. To a state.
Subject to Cindy's confirmation. My vote's subject to Cindy's confirmation.
Cindy's gonna look at something. You're next, Bob. You ready to fight it?
There's eight, right? How many people are here? This is hard to do. Two. So, there are ten altogether or one?
There's ten people, there's ten people here, one absent.
Okay, eight zero two, okay.
Lynn's the only one not here. You get to find answers.
Oh, I do, okay.
Yeah, you're next. You're next on the agenda.
Alright, so. I'm sorry, I'm, I'm too many people tonight. Okay. So, I'm sorry that the report was late, but I wanted to have a very accurate picture. So, I had to meet with a few people, a few directors to go over their budgets. So, as of today, we're showing at the end of May, we have excess of 509,976.18. After what's been processed today, another 74,870. It's 4,351,0613 is our current available balance.
What's it now, 4,000?
And what I have encumbered in here on page, five, is the program loss for the school lunch.
So, what would be that number?
So, right now through May, we have a loss of $41,210. At this time last year, our loss was 61,655. So, we're to the better from last year by 20,445. And that's thanks to our consultant and our new food service director putting us on our good, on a good path. And if we didn't have to have the consultant this year, if I take out those, those amounts, right now we'd have a profit of about $9,400. So, we are on the road to recovery in our school lunch program. I'm happy to report.
I got a question on all of these. You're sure that you've got every dime that we're obligated to spend in the encumbrances?
No, no, I just did the majors. I did my.
We didn't spend 10 cents.
That's correct. The state picked up the funding of that at the beginning of this year and the previous year. Remember the year they picked up the beginning of that?
No, because no one ever told me to take it out.
So, they pick it, they picked up the, they picked up the cost of that. They bought into the system.
Oh, that's good.
Yeah.
But we got $1,000.
So, that $1,000 will show up at the end as a.
I just want to make sure we're still doing.
Oh, we are, yeah.
Put that in and make sure we did every hit.
Okay, so the, the food service didn't go in, I didn't, I didn't change the date. It'll show up in June. So, it, it shows up in that 400,000 figure that I, I spoke of.
So, if everything goes well here, everything that we know, providing so, we should have about 375 left.
That's usually the goal. What we do at the end also is clean up any technology purchases that we may have put off during the year. So, I will be checking in with Darius and Scott to see if there's any technology purchases that we've been putting off because we've, we've hit the budgets and if there's any.
I mean, I think there's still a couple items that are gonna be, spent out for the end of June. For example, if you look at like textbooks under there, I think right now that's around, it should be low teens in that number. I'm gonna buy next year's textbooks with this year's money to save money to that account. You know what I mean? I do some, you know, you kind of buy, you know, I already know what I have to buy for.
So, we're gonna take.
So, I buy out of this year. If I have leftover money in May, I tell the department heads to get me the request for textbooks for next year. And I try to buy some, if there's any money left over in the textbook fund for next year. So, that money will be spent, some portion of it will be.
You've got 17,695 as of May. The other thing, I do have Donna Lloyd, when she gets the manual purchase orders from Roberta, she is entering them into the InfiniVision system. So, we've got more things encumbered at this point than we did last year at this time. So, that's, that's an improvement as well. And we should be going live with the purchase order system July 1st. That is the goal.
I'm happy for that.
So, unless anyone else has any other questions, that is my report.
There was one, the heating fuel. We don't, we, we buy natural gas, so we really can't prepay for that.
We're, we're contract, we're under contract, yeah.
Okay, yeah.
No, there's no tank I can fill up with the gas, no.
Well, we used to have oil tanks, but we're not gonna fill up because we're not gonna use them.
I think we, didn't we remove them here?
Oh, no, it's, yes, we burned, we burned, we cleaned it, we burned it down and cleaned it out.
Yeah.
So, you probably saw savings last year when we did that. They gotta keep a certain amount, I imagine, in there to keep the tank healthy. That's a, that's a question.
No, he passed on having me fill it this year because I had put it out to bid. And when, when it was time to commit to the bid, he said, "Don't do it."
Okay. I mean, there's still some, there's still some in there because I don't think they keep an empty tank, do they?
He found a company that, we can leave them empty. They fill it with something.
Okay, that's what, okay.
Because we're sitting with almost $49,000 there, which is significant. We'll try to spend it, Bob, okay? You don't have to spend it. I just. There's some things that we need to purchase, so we might be able to. But, well, we have the discretion to move it to a different account if any night we want to move it. We can do that. What would you like to move it tonight?
I mean, that becomes, so, that is the end of year. The fluctuations at the end of the year where, you know, some years you have a big snow year. So, you gotta, you know, pull money from some other account to be, for some years, you have a higher energy year. And so, you're fishing those around. And where we've been in the last few years is we've had a lot of E and D because I haven't been doing a big purchase at the end of the year. You know what I mean? And, you know, we've been doing, I was thinking some of the prior, I don't wanna say prior years, prior to my being principal there. We would do a lot of end of year spending to, you know, you know, let's say you're, you think we only have $300,000 over. It's like, okay, now we're gonna buy some technology. We're gonna buy some stuff that we put off, a few maintenance items, those kind of things. What we've done the last couple of years is we just let it go into E and D. And then we've gone to, through the committee here to take things out of E and D to buy, again, mostly maintenance.
More difficult because now we have to give the town 45 days notice that we're going to be doing that. So, one of the changes I did make in here was on page seven. The library roof project, we added $9,425 so that Bob could finish the, I didn't have to say this word, Claristry windows?
The windows.
The windows over there?
The windows over there?
Yeah.
Because when, when we bid it last year, it went over. So, we had 7,700 left in the encumbrances and we needed another 9,400. So, we took it from the retirement account, which had an excess, which still has an excess. So, I transferred the 9,425. So, that work is going to start happening. So, that completes the phase one that you approved of the library media center roof project.
We don't, we don't have to get anybody's permission to move it from one line to the other line.
No.
But if we decide to vote it out of E and D.
You do.
We have to.
And that's why I moved this because you voted this last time. And the other thing that we should update you as far as maintenance goes, we met with the fire marshal again and he, we came up with a different plan that only cost us about $4,500. So, we went ahead, did it, finished it. He's happy. He's gone.
When is this scheduled to start?
That I don't know, Damian. That would be if Bob Lusco, it may, it'll probably be after the kids leave.
Yeah, sometime this summer.
For some people that don't know what we're talking about, some knew, we had a fire in a kiln. So, we're, they made us put a hood on it. But we were able to, instead of $10,000, we're at $4,500.
I don't think it's a hood. I think it's an exhaust system, isn't it?
Hood slash exhaust.
But that's, that's where the.
Has an exhaust fan attached to a hood, right?
Yeah, it is exhaust fan attached to a hood, too.
Alright, I didn't have too many other questions. I went through and redlined a few things here. But heat field was a big one. And the concussion thing, I want to know what was happening there.
Any public comment tonight? Student advisory, doesn't look like.
Graduator?
Frontier Regional Building Subcommittee Committee, a few of us are part of.
We've made a, we had a meeting last Thursday. I thought it was a really productive meeting. I thought we made a lot of progress. We're now reaching, we have a meeting now set for July 12th to discuss that's kind of the final, I'd say the final step before we'll have some sort of, something to bring forward back to the committee. Am I guessing that right, Bob and Phil and Bob? What we talked about at the last meeting, they asked for us to share at the school committees. We talked about some definition of terms because we kind of use different terms interchangeably at meetings. When we talk about capital and maintenance and major maintenance. And so, these terms were, were put together and we discussed them just as a, people understand what maintenance means versus looking for capital improvement. And that a lot of the towns, I use the towns in general, but people, community members are concerned that, you know, maintenance things are being put on, would be put on the capital improvement budgets. For instance, you know, painting a wall, you know, which could, you know, not painting the whole building, but painting a certain wall is annual maintenance. You know, replacing certain parts of certain machines is annual maintenance. Where it gets kind of confusing is we talk about major maintenance. And major maintenance is things that sometimes it's deferred maintenance. Instead of replacing the belt in the AC unit, you need to replace the whole AC unit. So, it's a major maintenance. You're not changing the structure of the building. You're not building a wing. You're changing, you're doing a major maintenance project. And so, that's kind of what the thing in the middle is. And that's really what a lot of what we're looking for is. Right now in that subcommittee, we talk about the track. We're not talking about building a new track. Is he banging over there?
I don't know. I thought.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. We do have a maintenance man stuck in the, in the elevator right now and help is on the way. So, I may have to get up. What's that?
I didn't.
Has it a sturdy pay?
I didn't.
Patty didn't, so she.
And I was in there a lot longer.
He is on the clock.
So far.
Yes.
He's actually on his. He's on his.
That's a good.
Darius told him he was on his break right now.
So, yes, Russ is in there and he's doing just fine. I have another guy keeping an eye on him. So, and then the last thing is capital improvement. If you kind of read through, you're talking about larger change and change of function. And so, basically, the committee felt it was important, especially select board members, I think even more so than school committee members, felt it was important that we had a definition of understanding the different things when we talk about purchasing things. Especially smaller priced items that really should fall in our maintenance budget. Or is our maintenance budget not, not providing enough to deal with the daily maintenance? And do we need to look at that over time? So, that's one of the discussions. So, that was one of the things they asked me to bring back here. That's really all they ask us to report back. We are looking at different funding models on the 12th with costs to all four towns. From there, in our discussion was to talk about whether or not we pull the track out as a separate bonding item. And then there was, you know, if you read through our notes there, there was to talk about, there are some things on our, we call our A1 list, our materials that are deferred maintenance that really need to get done inside this building. So, we need to finalize that, put those numbers into multiple spreadsheets for the four towns and looking at the different options at those four things. And Joe Markarian, again, from FERCOG is, is, is leading us down that road of helping us produce those numbers. So, that's kind of where we're at. If anybody has any questions within.
I have one question.
Yes.
I, I get the definitions, but do they understand that some of our, some of the things that we ask, that we are asking for our maintenance items, but because they were unmaintained for so long, that they now become an urgent repair?
Yes. Yeah, I think people understood that. And that became, we had those, that kind of conversation that going back is that, you know, we put off maintenance, not increase the maintenance budget to keep the assessments to town law. Or, or to not cut services to students when you're putting off maintenance of things that can be put off. You know, is it this year? Do we replace the carpet in the library? Do we, can we go another year? We can go another year because, you know, this year's budget didn't allow for us for, you know, those kind of, I'm giving that kind of example as a deferred maintenance, where a carpet should be on a cycle, you know, timeline. So, we talked about that back and forth. It's like, put more money there, it's gonna cost more money here. It's that back and forth game.
And I think Bob Lusco's done a great job giving us a five-year capital plan. But what I'd like to see next is a maintenance plan. Like what, you know, he's telling us we don't have enough money in the maintenance line. Well, exactly what you said. So, in 2019, we should be doing A, B, C, D, you know, E, F, G. And then 2020, we should be doing this, you know, so that we have a monthly, quarterly, annual maintenance, you know, plan.
So, we're doing part of that.
Because if we do, if we spend this money and don't do that, we're gonna be right back in the same situation.
So, we are doing that. So, Joe is meeting with Bob, Joe Markarian is meeting with Bob Lusco, our facility's director. And he is going to take the list that Bob had presented to us about six months, a year ago. And he's going to create a 10-year plan so that the towns and the committee can see what things are coming over the next 10 years that we're gonna have to address. We know things are getting near end of life and the big fear is that it ends life before we're ready to pay for it. And so, we're gonna, you know, create this, you know, spreadsheet that is gonna be, you know, it's a lot of conversations. There's gonna be changes in it because things will break not on a time schedule that we want them to. Or things are gonna jump things on the list. Or, as we've noticed this year, we were able to pay for some of the things that are on our immediate list from, a, from, you know, we get the tractor through the towns this year. Thank you, towns. Also, we were able to pay for, you know, the second part of the skylights there. We were able to take $9,000 because we saved money on the initial patching of the roof. So, we were able to get that done. And then, so, you know, we're gonna continue to knock away at that list with what funds we have through E and D or whatever money comes our way, except for there. So, that list will change and then also things will change priority-wise if systems fail on some of the, you know, on some things that are systems, like refrigerators and AC units and heating units, that kind of thing.
I know Bob had a good, good thought when we were having our meeting about possibly the four towns. Instead of taking a bond out, maybe CPA money for the track. It's a thought. Yeah, I mean, it's just.
But they would need, but then we'd have to give public access to the track.
Which, which we could do.
Which I would like.
Yeah, so, and we talked about that. The main reason we don't have public access to the track is the fear of bikes, bikes on the track.
No supervision.
Get a kid out there laying skids. You can do a couple thousand dollars of damage pretty quickly. So, there is ways of doing it. Other schools have done it. Fence systems with S systems in it so you can't get a bike through. And you have handicap issues. So, we gotta look around and see what, what there is for, what other schools are doing to, to meet that need. But I think it can be, it can be done. But again, it'll be a couple thousand dollars adds whatever the cost is, but we can make that happen too.
But it's, it's something that we thought was a good idea where they'd rather have a bond and pay interest on it or, you know, like, who would Bob say, 2 million in Deerfield's account?
Deerfield's got about $2 million in the CPA, CPA fund. They just took almost a half a million dollars away in the regular stabilization fund at town meeting.
It would be wonderful. Deerfield, that was that full turf surface.
I know you asked about that the other night, Dick.
That's a no-go.
That's a no-go.
Bob, do you have a question?
One of the things we're talking about is some point in time, probably first week in, first meeting in September, establishing a fixed asset slash stabilization account. And, and the idea would be going forward every year to put a bunch of money into that account in our budget and just as a line in it. And so, we gradually build up that, so we have money to do all these things that we earmark that need to be done.
I don't think we can do that without the four-town approval.
We know that.
We can't make an assessment charge to them.
Well, the other day.
We're putting, we're putting our budget as a line item.
That's right. Well, we were, we discussed that with the consultant the other night.
I'll have you talk with Joe when he comes in.
Man, he's convinced.
Russ says we can't. Because it's not in the, Russ says we can't. It's not in the regional agreement.
Alright, well, that's, that's the case. And that's a different, you know, but according to Christine Lynch.
Oh, if it's in the regional agreement, you absolutely can't. But ours is silent.
Alright, well, we're gonna have to, that's why you're coming to the 12th.
Well, it's a stabilization account. We can eliminate the word capital and we don't have the problem.
Well, we already have a stabilization fund with nothing in front of it.
We want to.
So, now we want stabilization two with nothing in front of it?
We want it segregated so that we keep the selectmen happy, that it's not a slush fund, Patty. They don't trust people that have control of the money.
I'm just saying we already have a stabilization fund established. If we're gonna do another one.
Right, and I will bring this back after we go through it, when we do our final presentation. But the capitalization, stabilization fund, the difference is that you are going to go through a capital review committee, which we, remember, similar to what we have now, working with the towns. Because there is the fear of, we give you money, you're gonna spend it on different things and not on things that are important. And so, by creating review committee, we can say, "This is what we're looking to do this year. We're gonna have that 10-year plan." There should be no real surprises. It would be just what's the adjustment in that plan? And this is where we're spending the money. And the idea of putting it into the general line item, the general budget, we'll have to see if we can do it. And if we have, you know, if we have amendments we have to do to our agreement, then we'll be doing amendments to our agreement next year. But, you know, looking at, you keep it every year. We have this much, we have $50,000 going in every year to start knocking off these different issues that are coming up. I mean, that's the trade-off. It's either that or going after a large set of money and then paying the bond all those years. And with, you know, we're not paying interest in the bond if we do it that way. And that's a whole kind of education and sales pitch that we're gonna have to put together as the next segment. Because remember, we're talking, we're building this, our deadline is, again, the end of December to have this thing kind of what it looks like and we're getting ready to prepare to the towns. Meanwhile, we're gonna be doing the back, we're gonna be talking with the towns. Once we got this thing together, going to finance committees, going to select boards and saying, "This is what we have." And that's where the CPA conversation will come up. If you don't want to go this way, is CPA reasonable to go after in your towns? There's some towns that aren't gonna want, the committees who run their CPAs vary from town to town. And, you know, some aren't gonna want to give it up for the high school, middle, high school community. Some towns are gonna feel like it's in Deerfield. We know all those issues ahead of time. But it'll be this conversation, instead of where we normally get them in this conversation, it's the middle budget season. And so, now we're gonna be at the fall to have those conversations and, you know, not be forcing them to.
Just, just to sort of tie it all together, bring it on home. The, the, the definitions that we put in front of you are sort of directly related to the creation of the capital stabilization fund and, and everything else that the committee, that committee is trying to do. And it's important so that you can stand up at town meeting and say, "These are the policies. We're bound by them." These are the definitions that, you know, we can't just declare anything that we want to be capital and whatnot. So, it, that, that's a, that's a big deal. And the consultant, as they call the, the FERCOG municipal finance guy, is, is really, really impressive. Just astonishingly competent. And the amount of choices that he's putting before us are really impressive as well. And so, I mean, I call it going to the church of municipal finance with Reverend Joe. But it's gonna be, there's gonna be actually coherent products that come out of this to take to town meeting. And we're gonna be asking for a bond and a capital stabilization fund to be created at the same time in each of the town meetings. But.
So, just for an update, the bank that we used the last time when we bought out the bonds and turned them into a note, Eastern Bank, they are no longer going to be in the business. They've, they've gotten rid of that department. So, Lori Lombard, who was our account manager, has reached out to me and she will be probably working with Unibank come, come July.
Anybody else have any questions for our building committee? North of quiet, Mr. Decker?
Well, we're gonna talk about some other.
He's at a meeting, sorry.
We're gonna talk about some other things in a few minutes over, money coming from E and D account. And the problem with coming from the E and D account is we have to notify the selectmen and they get, they get the cost waves. But my suggestion is we go through this financial statement and look at some of the items that appear to be, have sufficient funds in it and have direct Patty to go through it. And not to clean out any one of those accounts, but to find whatever funds we're gonna need from those accounts and to make the necessary transfer. Okay, I think that would be a lot cleaner than having to defend that we spent money from E and D without getting prior approval.
Gotcha.
Like the very first item on page one?
You talking about school committee salary? Yeah, we could, we might have to give you $100 because you had to sign a couple of things to secretary, right?
Patty, do you give us an update, please, on the blue school?
But there's a lot of them in here. I put little circles around.
So, we have the completed and signed purchase and sale agreement from Mr. Ober. There's only two changes. In article one, they, it says seller agrees to sell to buyer and buyer agrees to purchase. And they switched it to end or assigns.
I don't agree with that one.
Well, Lucas fine with it. And then on number 18, we asked that the seller, asked the seller to store and access the, be able to store and access the records presently located at the premises for 12 months after closing. And they've changed that to until June 1st, 2019, seller to hold harmless at closing.
Which is almost a year.
Who's been directing the hold harmless agreement? Who's directing the hold harmless agreement?
I don't know. I'm not an attorney.
It gives you something to do, Phil. You're not able to find one in the.
That reference is a hold harmless agreement that's not been created yet, that's all.
The other thing is the, allowing the assignment of that contract is, the contract was made with a proposal to put in elderly housing.
But we don't care. We took that out. We don't care what he does with it.
Did we take that out or he took it out?
We took it. We voted to take it out because we did not care what he does with it. We just want to get rid of it.
He did say, correct me if I'm wrong, there's two units, instead of $1,000, there were gonna be $800.
Well, that's another thing, doesn't matter.
Something, you know, from low income housing or something.
If we, if it says he can assign it, that means he can turn around and flip that building. As soon as we approve that language, he could flip that contract to somebody else and make substantial bucks. Good for him.
So, what do we care?
It's America.
No one else came for it.
You were willing to take it for a dollar. You were willing to sell this building for a dollar.
The town of Whately for a dollar.
You could have.
And they still, they can still take it. After Phil signs this, now I have to send it to the town for their, their right of first refusal.
Fred was looking for that the other day, so.
We know.
I'm on, I'm on top of it. I'm on, I'm on top of it. And he also signed the actual, the Mass General Law, Chapter thirty B forms, too, that I wasn't even aware was supposed to be with it, but I went to a class and said, uh-oh, I just learned something new, and sent them to Mr. Goodrich, who sent them to Mr. Ober, who completed them. Cause we have to file it with the state that we sold property, so.
Billy, can you tell me, we used to have, there used to be a board member with that same last name from Whately. Am I right or wrong?
Same last name, it was Ober.
What's that?
They asked him already.
Same last name is, what, which, what name are we talking about?
Goodrich.
Bill Ober?
No, no, Goodrich. Goodrich.
Luke Goodrich is a graduate of Frontier Range in Whately.
Marty, was Marty? I don't think Skip was on school. Maybe his wife, maybe Marty.
I think Marty was on there. Yeah, that's what I thought.
Guys, you guys wanted me to get a local attorney to this?
That's fine. I'm just saying.
Yes, Cindy. If, if by chance, that whole assignment thing happens, does that affect us being able to keep our stuff there until June first?
No.
Or is that transfer over with any assignment?
Yeah, it runs with the property. It's in this, it's a contract that runs with the property, not the person.
And for all we know, the town of Whately may say, we are going to exercise our right, and we're gonna give you the thousand.
Right. No, I was just wondering if it went with the sale, so it sounds like it does.
There we have enough properties to worry about.
Did you wanna sign these tonight, Mr. T? Do you have a pen? Black?
Here. No.
Next.
And we do have, we do have a thing from Russ that says, because Mr. Paula has conflict, that Phil can sign it, and we are without a vice chair. Let me just sign on my own, and then date it.
About six-four. That could be ours.
Yeah.
I saw Cindy come in with a sweater on. I was, I was starting to sweat. You came in with a sweater on, it's like, and then Mary comes in with a sweater, it's like-
We're little people.
Let me tell you, it was beautiful convoy all day, where I was working. Oh, my God.
I hate to point it out, but it is the reason why we've insulated the ceiling, cause on a hot, on a solar day, it cooks up there, and then we gotta use the energy to-
We're gonna follow up with that branch, right?
Yeah.
Okay, next, cafeteria team leader position and salary schedule.
So, that was presented to you at the April joint meeting, and it was brought to you for consideration last month, and we're taking a vote this month.
I need a motion for a vote?
Motion.
Second.
Any other questions? All in favor? Aye?
Okay, and also last month, the non-union salary recommendations were presented and discussed, and they're on our agenda tonight to vote.
All the parties are included, with the exception of the business manager, cause she has a separate contact.
It was my renewal year.
Yeah, so she's not on the list. Page you're looking for.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to vote.
Second. Any other questions? All in favor?
So moved.
Okay, Darius, you wanna take up seven-eight, leave of absence for Patty and Patty?
Yeah, I can do it.
We've got policies.
You skipped the policies.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We've got D and E to get to before we get to that.
I'm sorry. Alright.
So, Lynn is not here, and I cannot speak to the various policy changes in addition, so I'm hoping that Mrs. Raymond and Mr. Modesto can help out in this area if anyone has any questions.
Mr. Cantor would be happy to.
Oh, Mr. Cantor would be-
You were in the room, too.
You were the chairman of the committee.
Oh, Mr. Hall, I didn't know. Okay.
You were the chairman of the committee.
Sorry, I forgot.
Always.
So, all, so anyone can answer your questions, except me.
How quick you forget.
Yeah, the, the, the specific ones that are, in this particular package, were fairly minor change.
Minuscule.
Minuscule, and these were, I mean, it's kinda selfish, does anybody, if anybody has any questions about them, you don't really need to spend a lot of time on them, I think.
Some words, just a couple of words were added, some were taken away. It was all, like house cleaning, as Bill would say.
And part of it was in, it was, changes were made after opportunity for other, Mr. Modesto to make some changes as to what specific, how to better describe exactly what, what the current practice is and whatnot, so.
These were all checked out by your counsel.
As if that would give you a lot of confidence.
You don't have much faith in our counsel. Is there a region for that?
Let's stick to our top.
Let's go.
That's appropriate.
Do I have a motion on the, on the policy changes?
So moved.
Second. Any other questions? All in favor? Thank you. I guess you're- Well, you're full, you're full of everything tonight.
So, when we had our audit done, we had discussed, we had, I had brought up an issue that I was concerned about regarding the, the status of some of our liability accounts. So, I gave you all a spreadsheet that looks like this. And this is what's happening. So, when we have all the employees at Frontier who take life, dental, and health, have deductions taken from September to June, but it's paying for the health insurance from September to August. So, in June, there should be two months' worth of monies that we've paid in sitting in these accounts. And they're not. They're not there. Now, how did this happen? I cannot tell you, because this existed when I got here. So, this is the recommended entry to correct those accounts. The first column, that's H, that means health. The second column is L, that's life, and the third column, D, is dental, and T is total. So, we originally thought it was gonna be around sixty thousand. The health, the total to fix all three accounts is eighty-one thousand, six fifty-three, forty-eight. The recommendation is to take sixty-eight thousand, three twenty-eight, sixty-two from the E and D, or, and then maybe try to find thirteen thousand, three twenty-four, eighty-six in this year's expenditures, as Mr. Decker was saying, to make the, the full correction of the eighty-one thousand, six fifty-three, forty-eight. This includes not only actives, but also retirees.
We take that money out of your paychecks?
Yeah.
Where'd you go?
I, I think the error happened, this is my conjecture. When we switched from Franklin County to Hampshire County Trust, I think the accounting got screwed up. And no one ever fixed it. And I raised this issue with Stanley Pulick several times, and he'd say, no, you're wrong. That's not what you're paying for. But when I would talk to Paula, who does it, Paula's saying, well, this is how I was taught to do it. And I said, okay, well, if we're doing it the way you were taught to do it, then our books are wrong. Because there should be two months' worth of deductions held from everybody's pay sitting in these accounts in June, and it's not there. And, and part of this could be that when we joined Hampshire Trust, I think they took the money out of the withholdings to make the deposit with Hampshire Group Insurance Trust. And I, that, and I have, I'm just totally guessing how this happened.
See, and I, I don't know. Conjecture just doesn't sit well.
Well, there's no, there's no history here. There's nobody here, there's nobody-
They had the money deducted.
There's no, there's nobody here now that knows how it got screwed up, Phil.
They did have the money deducted from their paychecks.
Absolutely.
And, and the premiums were paid.
And the premiums were paid.
So, the money is somewhere.
No.
It was, whenever this, whenever the, the original error occurred.
But there's no money to pay the July and August premiums. It's gonna be accrued on June thirtieth to pay them. We've taken their money, we've spent their money, but we haven't accrued the liability that should be on the books on the first of July.
But the amounts deducted from their paychecks were correct amounts.
Correct. Yes, that was all checked out.
And we didn't pay too much during the intervening ten months that were missing two months. We didn't, we didn't overpay during those ten months.
It's a perpetual-
So, the money is somewhere.
Right. It's a perpetual, one year, one year, we probably overstated our expenditures and understated our liability. And we've never made the correction.
You'd have to probably go back to when the, they went to the Hampshire Trust, and go back and see, on that switch over, how much we had to upfront there when we first joined them.
We have like a two-hundred thousand dollar deposit with them. So, that, so, and that deposit, and I asked if that, with that deposit should, I didn't know that, that we had money there. And I asked if that money should be shown as an asset on our books, and they said no. But we have two-hundred thousand dollars on deposit with Hampshire Group Insurance Trust. And what that money is for is if we decide to leave, that's the trailings money. So, once we leave, anything that, the bills, if the bills come in late, they're gonna use that to pay it.
But it should be listed on our balance sheet, because it is an asset.
He said, I asked, he said no.
But they're not gonna ever give it to us.
Right. He said no.
But, anyway, you wanna take the money from E and D?
Well, um-
And I think if we take it from E and D, we're gonna have to explain a lot to the board of selectmen in the four towns, cause you're gonna have to send them a notice.
Well, um-
Or whatever is statutorily required.
So, I was asked to amend the vote to say, to approve the use of last year's ending balance to correct the insurance premiums accounting in the approximate amount of sixty thousand, but we can now change it to the sixty-eight, three twenty-eight, sixty-two. Cause we really should've made the, we should've made the entry.
So, the financial statements will have to be amended then.
Well, yes. He didn't-
And the annual reports will have to be amended.
Then we can take it out of E and D, and we, and we send the forty-five day notice. I don't do it either way.
But if we can find it in this current year's budget, by isolating some of those accounts, we can transfer the money in to make that balance, and, and I think it's quite cleaner.
I would, I would prefer that, because then we don't have to give the forty-five day notice. But if we are taking, if I got an eighty-one, that might take up, that might eat up the whole chunk of money that could be available for all we know.
Well, I don't know. You know, I went through and I got a whole bunch of items circled that if you took half of it, each one of them-
Did I add up to eighty-one thousand?
Oh, yeah. I mean, you got-
But did you also circle the big negatives?
Well, I took, that's why I said you take half of them. I mean, you-
What are you, what are you projecting at the end of June? What are you projecting that approximately we're gonna have? Are we gonna have?
We're gonna have nothing in there, and they're telling us we should have eighty-one thousand, six fifty-three, forty-eight.
No, I'm talking about-
No, in our budget.
In our, in our budget.
About three hundred thousand to three fifty.
Well, right now, we have three hundred and forty-five thousand, and it's June twelfth.
So, if we have two hundred thousand left over?
We can still take the eighty-one.
So, we can take the eighty-one out of the two hundred. I'm just, you know, we have-
That's all I'm saying is, we have been having our free cash certified at about three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars a year. If we do this out of this year's, just know that our free cash, our excess and deficiency number is going to be very low, certified very low.
Except what we're already carrying in that account that we haven't taken out.
Right.
What have we done? This has been going on for so many years. What have we been doing for the last ten years to cover this?
Right. They just keep making the same entries every year, Damian, and that's, and that's part two. Because I've asked the auditors, I said, well, which, if we, if I make this entry, then I need you to help me draw, draft up a procedure of how this is supposed to get booked correctly every month, so that it doesn't happen again. So, now, so, right now, she's banging the expense account in July and August. She should be banging the withholding account.
Right.
But it's been going on-
So, it's been going on for so long.
But it started before Patty, so that's-
And before Paula.
But this is conjecture. But this is conjecture.
It started before Paula.
I understand that, but if the money is always short-
Was Paula took over from here.
Go all the way back to Dr. Stretchy.
But nobody's ever known.
If, if the money is always short in June, how have we always covered it? Hasn't this been an issue every single June?
It doesn't get caught, Damian.
I've been, when I came here, and I tried to get my head around this, okay? I would go to our auditor and ask him, you know, Paula's telling me this, it works this way, and he would say, no, it works this way, so there should be no money. So, he was saying it was actually working in reverse. So, he wouldn't fix it. So, then we decided to go out for a new audit, for, and we got Scanlon in. So, the first year Tom was here, I said, Tom, here's this issue I have. And he said, well, we'll do some testing. He goes, but this is our first year, so let us get our feet wet. So, then he tested it. So, he did a little testing first year, little testing second year, and then this is his third year, and he said, you're right, this is wrong. And, and he's making the recommendation to-
Well, he told us about it when he came in.
Right.
So, it's just been a paper error for ten years, and we haven't had to cover the money. And now we have to cover the money.
The money's always been taken from people's paychecks. We just don't know where the hell it went.
Right. This is putting, this is putting on the books that we've taken this amount of money out of people's paychecks. So, if I, if anyone were to leave, we'd owe them money. Because if, if any teacher that left in June, well, they, no, I shouldn't say teacher, cause teachers by law are covered through July and August. So, if we had an instructional assistant leave us in June, and they said they didn't want their insurance anymore, we'd owe them July and August premiums, and they're not here to pay them back.
But, see, what's happened is they've never actually listed all that money that they withheld, alright? Cause they withheld four thousand dollars, and they only paid out thirty-six hundred on an employee during the year. So, that little four hundred dollars was never booked as a liability to the district on July one. So, what's happening is our financial statements have been off, because we didn't properly disclose our liabilities.
So, if we take this from free cash, then further down the road, if we, if something happens, can we then do the E and D for something else? You don't wanna take it from E and D-
Free cash and E and D are the same thing.
Okay, so then we need forty-five days for vote. What's, what were you and Bob, so-
What, what, what are, we should've made the adjustments before we closed the books and threw the money into the E and D. We should've done that last year, only we didn't have the figures.
Okay.
So, now, they've spent the time and came up with the actual, what they're estimating as figures, and I helped them do this.
Okay.
So, these are the figures-
Right.
-that we feel should be on the books this June thirtieth.
So, where, where, where are you two in agreement, strangely enough?
That instead, that instead of voting it out of E and D, that I find it in this year's budget and make the correction.
Go through the individual line items in the budget and take some. We make the appropriate transfers to take the extra money from seventeen different places, put it in, put it in the account that will properly cover this, so that it doesn't involve E and D, free cash, whatever you wanna call it, and it doesn't involve forty-five days notification or anything else. Cause we are free as a group to make the transfers within the line items in this budget. We just gotta pick through the thing and find-
So, if that's a motion, I'll second it.
Hold on for a second.
We can still have discussion.
Okay. Sure, why not?
Okay, I'll second it.
Okay.
My, my thought is, back when Mr. Scanlon brought this to our attention with Patty's attention, it was sixty thousand dollars. I just wanna know why it's up to eighty-one thousand dollars from sixty thousand a year ago.
The life in the dental, I don't think-
Right. We, we had originally only been talking about the health, and then when we were going through the accounts, it, the light dawned, wait a minute, if the health's wrong, the life in the dental's wrong, too.
So, so, we've never actually done the notification to the select boards, we've never done that process. We've always-
No, but we've been hit on the hand.
So, this is every bit the same as putting in a request to get something on the warrant for town meeting, in terms of the, the way you'll be evaluated on your request.
If we, if we did it this way.
Right. So, so, when you, so they're gonna say eighty thousand dollars, that's real money, come in, tell us why you need it. And if, if we sit there and say, we're guessing this is why, you're gonna-
No, we're not get, we're not guessing why. We know what we have to do. We don't know how it happened.
Alright, we're guessing how. We're guessing how is the same, just as bad as we're guessing why. And, and-
That's if anybody's watching us.
I'm, I'm gonna suggest, I'm gonna suggest that, that, in order to avoid having your head handed to you at a select board meeting, that you-
Not my head. This happened before me. I brought it to-
Who's gonna, who's gonna-
Hello, I'm the one that brought it to the attention that it was wrong.
Who's gonna be going to the select boards in the summer and-
I think they've already heard about it. We talked about it when they were here at the budget meeting.
Yes. I should be getting credit.
So, this is, this motion is good for X. So, we have a motion in a second to take the eighty-one thousand out of multiple line items, instead of going through-
To identify and make the proper transfers. line items instead of going through, to identify and make the proper transfers, sufficient to cover.
All right. So, um, we're going to take the entire eighty-three, eighty-one thousand-
Round it up a little bit.
I'll say eighty-two thousand, approximately eighty-two thousand.
From line items within the budget.
From this year's expenses budget. In order to correct the accounting for insurance, on a motion from-
Me.
Bill, Bill Smith. And a second from me.
Um, the committee agrees, uh, to, to use current year funds.
And we're going to reallocate existing line items to cover these sufficient parts. Do you want us to try to tell you which accounts or you-
No, Bob, I'm, I'm, I'm good.
She's a big girl.
What's that guy doing?
It's her job.
It's sexist, you know, Robert. You're in trouble for that.
Moving on.
It's sizist.
It's sizist. That's cute. Sizist.
I am, I'm waiting for-
She's just got to finish.
Before we vote on that, though, I mean, is that feasible to come up with eighty-two thousand dollars per line item?
I would, I, I can tell you right now that if I told, if I went to Mr. D, uh, Mazzesto and Mr. Scott and said, "What do you need in technology?" They'd tell me, "Can you get, buy me eighty-five grand?" And I'd say, "Yes, I'll find you eighty-five grand."
Now, you got to tell them.
Now, you got to tell them.
Eighty-five grand.
Yeah, I know. It's like, uh, new tires in the car. You don't really notice what you've got. Just purchase.
Darius, we'll take care of you.
Okay. So, um, the committee agreed to reallocate this year's expenses for, for insurance premiums in order to correct the accounting in the approximate amount of eighty-two thousand. So, we need a vote.
All in favor? Thank you.
So, this is now corrected?
It will be. I'll make the entry.
And it will never happen again?
Never, ever.
Well, actually, the first of July, I think, there should be an, a, uh-
Oh, okay.
Were she done by the accountant to, to actually pinpoint the liability, make sure we have the proper liability going forward?
Darius, you want to take, take on the leave of absence this time, please?
Sure. Um, you have a request for leave of absence from faculty member. According to the collective bargaining agreement, it has to come to you. Um, and basically, we have a, a faculty member who is taking an administrative position within the greater five-town district, I mean, four-town district, rather, um, and is looking for a year, to get a year leave of absence. A year leave of absence basically means that we're holding a position for this person. They don't accrue step. They don't get any wages. They get nothing. We're just holding that position for a year. When a teacher moves to, just for those who don't know this, if, for teachers who move to the administrative contract, administrative contract, lose all the protections of their union, lose all their, um, protections of having a job within a system. So, it's a big risk to go from that first year into administration. And so, we've done this before. Um, you haven't done it, but the district, the five, the four towns and five schools have done it before with other first-year administrators to give that protection. If ninety days goes by and this person can't administrate, they're, they're taking a big risk, and therefore, we're trying to support, um, people from within to take the risk and that kind of thing. And I have no, um, I have no hesitation on this individual coming back to Frontier. I'd hire this person in a second. Um, I'm happy to, I'm not happy to see her leave Frontier.
Robert, if she decides to come back, uh, at the ninety-day time, are you going to have a slot for her? Because you're giving her a year's leave.
No, technically, it'd be a one-year leave of absence. I, I could tell her to wait the one year, or if I had an opening, um-
But we're under no obligation to take her back to the following September.
It's a one-year leave. She's not, her budget, her position's going to be, the money in the budget for her position's going to be spent on someone else.
All right. I just want to make sure it's clear. And I did discuss this with you before, so I-
Yep.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve a one-year leave of absence for a faculty member for the purpose of transferring into another district school position.
It's a, it's a superintendent's union.
Okay, wait a minute. I'm just reading. I'm just reading.
But that's not correct. It's not another district. It's the Deerfield School Committee.
Into another in-district school position.
It's not in the district.
I have under new business. The committee discussed the requested leave of a Frontier regional faculty member in order that she may be allowed to transfer to the Deerfield Elementary School for a period of one year on a motion from Sidney W. Met, seconded by Damian Fowles-Foswell.
Sounds good to me.
All in favor?
Patty, you're up again.
Okay. So, um, we, uh, three years ago, um, the committee, uh, wanted to go out and search for a new audit firm. And we did, we had a group that, uh, members of this committee served on, and we chose Scanlon and Associates. And we did a three-year contract with them. This is the third year. So, Mr. Scanlon has proposed, um, another three-year contract. He has not increased his prices. He's going to hold the price the same. So, it'll be seventeen thousand dollars a year for the audit, three thousand dollars for the end-of-the-year report, and I believe it was three thousand dollars for the, um, uh, Student Activity Fund, which also now is required by Desi to be, um, to be done. Yes. Um, so altogether, uh, so, twenty-three thousand dollars a year, and he would hold that price for fiscal year eighteen, nineteen, and twenty. Um, and I'm just looking for permission to have the superintendent or myself sign this contract for three-year engagement letter.
Don't move.
Question?
Second.
Second first?
Second.
Questions? Mr. Decker?
Is, um, in the past, he's given us statements that are sufficient to keep bonding companies happy? Are those included?
We haven't had a need for them.
No, but he's given us, he's audited with, with that in mind.
Yes. And he also audits our, our excess and deficiency, which includes a balance sheet.
But what I'm just trying to say is, we're, he will cover if we have to come up with something to get the bonding, uh, financed.
There may be a cost to that if it's outside the scope of the audit, of, of the engagement.
I thought he had included it the last time. So, that was my only question.
I don't-
If we had, if he had to do work, if we had to go, go to a bond for the, for the project?
Yeah, there's some different requirements, I think.
Yeah, but what's it got to do with the audit? I wouldn't expect him to do it.
Right. This, that would be a separate issue. We may have to go outside the, just like, some things are covered by our retainer with our attorney, and some things aren't covered by our retainer with our, with our attorney.
All right. I just-
So, this is just the basic auditing of the financial statements for, for the next three years.
Nineteen, twenty, and twenty-one, right, this year?
Eighteen, nineteen, twenty.
Are we in eighteen?
We're in eighteen.
We're in eighteen.
So, it would be, did he do this year, next year, and the following?
The audits for eighteen.
Oh, the audit of the whole year. Got it.
And I just, I, I, and I had sent you, I had sent you this information earlier, and I, I have to tell you, there's such a world of difference with having him here, um, with his staff. Um, and they're local, and I like that they're a local company. Um, Tom takes my calls. I call him all year long, whenever something pops up, to get his advice. Uh, he helped us when we were, uh, we reviewed with him our choice of where to put our OPEP money. He came over and we reviewed with him and got his opinion on that. He's always very helpful whenever we call him, and it's, uh, it, it's a good working relationship and, and, and with our staff and his staff.
So, I'd just like to echo that he's also the auditor for a number of our towns.
Yes, he is.
And, uh, he's very well thought of, and I know the Conway Town Hall was-
I don't think he does gum. He does Sunderland. He does Weyland.
He might have in the past or-
Yeah, but we think well of him.
Yeah.
You guys went to some other firm, because I had the end-of-the-year report. That's the only reason I know.
Okay. Um, we're going to be going into executive session.
Well, I need a vote.
Oh, I thought we-
You got a motion?
No.
You got a motion? You got a second. I ask questions.
All in favor?
Thank you. Sorry. Todd?
So, um, do you, are you given permission, uh, does that include permission for me to sign the engagement letter?
Your line.
I think that was written in there, actually. Right there between three-year and audit.
So, we're going to go into executive session.
You got to see the, excuse me?
You got C?
Yeah. Yeah, we have to go into executive session for that.
For C?
For C, yes.
You for C in executive session?
For B, if you read B underneath.
Number nine.
Yeah. So, um, let me just find the, so, what, what time is it?
Uh, seven oh five.
Seven oh five. Okay. So, um, I'm going to need a roll call.
It's going to be, if I could promise you, it's going to be, should be fairly quick.
Yeah, we've said that before.
Should we just move to adjourn?
Get on that big boat. There's no way it can sink.
Bobby, we're not going to wait for them to come down.
Bobby, we're coming back because we have to do the reports.
We have to adjourn out of it. Okay, now I need a motion.
Mr. Chairman? Hold on.
Are we going to do the mo, do you not want us to do the motion in a second about what we just talked about next, in, in executive session?
I want to make the motion relative to-
Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Decker.
I moved it under the direction of the principal, authorization to use up to thirty thousand dollars from the rental account.
No.
No, it's twenty, twenty.
He can make any kind of motion he wants.
Okay.
We can amend it.
Simply because the thirty thousand and take the, uh, notify the towns for the other ten thousand out of E and D. Uh, but if you want to change it to something else, that's fine. I just want to give them-
I don't think you can change it once we're out.
I just want to, I want to make sure he has enough money to, out of the rental account, to do the doors and, and whatever else, and not be short.
If we go, that's where we're going. But I don't think we can change the motion now that we're out of executive session.
Here, we made the motion in-
You talked about making a motion. You didn't vote a motion.
Nobody made it.
We did not vote the motion, but we made the motion.
You didn't vote any motion.
But then, do we have to go back in?
No, we don't.
No? So, are you making an amendment, or is it a motion?
We made a motion. There was no second. This motion's dead.
Okay.
Right.
All right. So, can I read the one that, that Donna wrote, to make my life simple?
Go for it.
Okay. The committee agreed to use approximately forty thousand dollars from, uh, ten, twenty from E and D, twenty from building rental, for the purpose of building security improvements to be done under the direction of the principal, and also to approve executive session minutes. Can I get a motion?
Don't move.
I'm sorry, who said that?
Bill.
Second.
Okay.
Do a match.
Second.
Okay.
How do you get into executive session?
Because Bill Smith told me to do it before we win it. We have to approve both of them.
We have to approve both of them in open session.
Yeah. We don't do it tonight. We're not doing it tonight.
Does anybody else have any other discussion about either the-
I would think they'd be separate.
Anybody have, any other discussion about the security? All in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Can I go home now?
Nope. Oh, we got more stuff.
Um, I don't have any collaborative?
Yes.
We have a meeting coming up, I think, on the twenty-seventh. Uh, it was a meeting, uh, late last month. Uh, we were informed that there's a projected deficit of at least two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars.
There's a lot of that going around.
Not here.
I know.
Okay. And, uh, just want you to know, uh, you know, people aren't happy about it. And, uh, but that's the, that's the best-case scenario. Right now, it's higher than that. But they think it's going to close to about a two-hundred-and-fifty thousand shortfall. Uh, so, the other thing is, I did have, uh, Donna Hathaway send you a bunch of stuff. Uh, and there's another email I got after that that, uh, I can forward to you on the new programs and what have you, if anybody's interested. If anybody interested in the programs going forward, I'll have it all emailed to you. All right?
Thanks.
But I don't like two-fifty short because they get no surplus to really to fall back on.
How did that happen?
I can tell you a couple of things, but they, we scolded for it.
Okay, don't.
Okay. So-
Darius, you have a principal's report in front of us?
Yep. I mean, most of the stuff is, I think we can read through. Um, we graduated class. Thank everybody who could attend. Skip the rain, which was wonderful. I did some AP test statistics, just so that, looking at the number of students who are participating in AP exams and AP classes. It's pretty impressive when you look at, you know, our graduating classes, eighty-three. Um, so, you're talking about fifty to sixty percent of our kids attempting an AP class, which is wonderful. Um, we had our annual art show that we do each year, that students put on performances and show their visual, um, displays, um, for the whole, um, student body and staff. I want to thank those who participate in the Memorial Day parades, the bands and such. They're, I know they're a highlight. And I got many compliments from the community, um, unsolicited, obviously. Um, people calling me the next day, just very happy about, um, the Memorial Day parades. We did our step-up days, two days after graduation. Once we get one group out, we got the next group in. And just as, like, kind of as a refresher, as we do it, we do a step-up also to high school. So, we have sixth and seventh, seventh and eighth, and eighth and ninth. So, it's a big three-ring circus. And then, we do a big fair in the gym, um, presenting all the different clubs and activities, and, um, kind of the whole school gets into it. And then, last, I was just notified yesterday, that, um, our varsity baseball program, uh, won the, uh, Hampshire County, Hampshire and Franklin County Baseball Empire Association Sportsmanship Award, um, which is very impressive. I mean, usually, that award, considering that we have a very successful season going on right now for baseball, to also win the sportsmanship award, um, is a nice one-two combination for them. So, I just wanted to say that publicly. Final exams Thursday and Friday next week, and then we're off to summer.
Woo-hoo. Anybody have any questions for Darius? No superintendent report tonight?
No, she didn't outsend one.
Move to you, Jen.
I got it.
All in favor? Thank you.